Yes, now we are.
Okay, who's ever found that is if they could. Okay, thanks for being patient, but we got through our technical issues. So, welcome to tonight's town of Pompe planning board meeting. Today is Monday, May 16th, 2022. If we could first stand and recite. First thing I'd like to do tonight is ask for a moment of silence in memory of Carol Prolik, who passed away earlier this month, longtime town resident, and she was also secretary to this board for a period of time also. So, in memory of Carol, please. Thank you. First up, minutes to review from the April 18th planning board meeting. Anybody have corrections to them? Maybe a couple minor titles, Jamie, that will get to you.
Okay, thank you.
Can you do spellings other than that? Is there a motion to approve? In a second?
A second.
Motion and second on the floor. No further discussion and all in favor? Disapproving, none, motion carries. Thank you. First, before we get to the rest of the agenda, I'd like to make a couple introductions. In the rear of the room, we have our new code enforcement officers. First of all, Tim Barrett. And I guess if you can introduce yourself a little bit to us and then the difference between what you're going to be charged with versus what Tyler's going to be responsible for.
So, so far, I'm going to do building permit applications, issuing permits, COs, compliance certificates, reviewing lot lines and you guys. Everything pretty much building related. As the code goes to.
On reviewing like the applications that come in and so on, that he would be the contact point on those. So, okay. Amber is going to try to have daytime hours here throughout the week. Be patient with him as he figures out the schedule. He does work part-time for a couple other, three other towns. And fitting things in together, but we definitely welcome you, Tim.
Thank you. So, Tim, is one of your number, did you get one of Bob Rodriguez's cell numbers?
I have a town cell working now. It wasn't working for, it was still tied to Lloyd for a couple days, but I have it now.
It's 409.
I think 25, believe so.
I think that's one.
627.
Okay, great, perfect.
Okay. And next up, Tyler.
My name is Tyler.
Tyler, what's your last name?
Johnson.
Thank you.
My primary responsibility for the town will be fire inspections and complaints related to property maintenance such as garbage, vehicles. And trying to get that back on track. So, that'll be my two primary, essentially helping him with whatever he needs.
Assumption that if we have a question, it's going to go to his number.
Yeah.
Okay, but they will work together. And again, you work for a town or two also. So, hopefully we can get things covered.
So, what other towns are you guys working?
I'm currently employed full-time by the town of Anadaga. So, as the deputy code enforcement officer, well, essentially the same thing, doing fire inspections, code complaints for them. Another various tasks that I need to, so inspections. If, you know, they need somebody to go out and do an inspection, I'll go out and do it, primarily my focus is the fire inspections and those code complaints.
Right. Welcome aboard. Welcome, guys.
I guess, Tim, if you say which other towns that you're.
All in the county of Cortland. I do Cincinnati, Truxton, and Scott.
Perfect.
All right.
Anadaga's been a little different.
Yeah, we talked plenty up here.
It's been busy the past week. So, anyway, welcome, and I do thank you both for coming tonight. We can put a face with a name for everybody too. All right, from there, on the agenda is the Hootnik subdivision, Sally Hootnik and attorney Diane Finnegan, which Diane is here this evening. Brick Eric Spals Road, parcel number 004.01.03.1. There'll be a short, quick presentation upfront on this, and then we make sure that we have various information that we have requested that we did this in the past month. We do have full-size maps. We can take a good look at also.
Perfect.
So, we'll get that underway, and then we'll be opening up a public hearing on this potential subdivision. I'm up there. Yeah, a couple of the yes, please.
As you know, my name's Diane Finnegan. I'm the attorney for Sally Hootnik. He's the owner of the property. We've been in various iterations of this potential subdivision for a few years. And we've required to address various concerns and subdivision possible.
Yes.
And hopefully, we will have addressed the concerns this board has had. And/or we will continue to address them so that subdivision, at this point, as you all know, there have been lot line adjustments. The first lot line adjustment reduced the back property line by five acres, and that that lot line adjustment ended up adding to the property of John Mitten. Making what used to look like kind of a T, a little bit stranger yet. So, the remaining lot line adjustment occurred when a 1.6 acre parcel was added to the 25 acre parcel that remained after the lot line adjustment. So now, the total of the contiguous property that's before the planning board is approximately 26 acres. And what we see tonight is a preliminary subdivision approval so that there, this, this 26 acre lot will now be made into two lots. One of approximately 21 acres and one of five acres. The five acre lot, as you know, Mrs. Hootnik intends to keep and build a approved residence on, for lack of a better word. After much consideration, we decided that before we went forward with a lot of time and expense on site development, we would see if we can get the subdivision piece done. The remaining 21 acre parcel, Sally intends to sell. I believe at the last meeting, the lovely lady next to me was here. She's the person we intend to sell to. And the sale will only occur, subdivision occurs. So, I think that's why she's attending these meetings, to see how things are going. Sue and the board worked very hard to figure out a way, because of the strange shape of this property, to find a way to meet the town's code and zoning for farm. And by that, I mean making sure that there was appropriate road frontage and acreage on the two parcels. I believe the five acres is the minimum for farm in agriculture, you know, farm district. And the 21 acres is certainly appropriate. The issue's always been road frontage because of the strange shape of this parcel. It's only a little over 250 feet of frontage on Brick Eric Spals Road. And I think that after we tried various iterations, the only way to conform to the, to the code without massive needs for variances and other things was to build the road. And so, we moved forward under the hope that will be sufficient for the proper frontages. We received comments from John Dunkle, town engineer, at the last meeting. Those comments include the fact that our state reform needed updating. We've done that and sent it in. It now is appropriate and consistent with the state's assessment of the environmental issues on the property. The other issue was that we needed the town highway superintendent, the new one, to approve the location of the road and that the fire, Manly's Fire Department chief also approved the location and type of road. He emailed me and I've sent it on to you, the, the, the fire chief has approved it. And Sue just shared with me when I walked in that your town highway superintendent went out and looked, his only issue was the same issue that Mr. Rodriguez had, which was the location of the current entrance to the property is inappropriate for the road. The road needed to be moved north a certain distance in order that the road headlights coming out of the property would not go directly into the home across the street. So, the, the current location where there's a chain link fence that goes through it and a no trespassing sign where there's actually a way to drive into the property will not be the location of the road. The road will be offset north centered on the end of the T so that any lights, headlights that end up coming out of the road not bear into the house across the street, the bear into empty land. The other comments that town engineer Dunkle had, had to do with meeting highway drawings for the roadway, which have been added to the map. I don't know whether Steve Castorinos has sent in his entire report to the board yet. He's been under a lot of stress. He's very, very, very busy. He's doing his best. Honestly, you can't approve the road until you have that piece of material. We understand that. So, if it's not here, it will be shortly. It is designed onto this map, the type of road, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm sure there's a more detailed report coming from him, if you don't have it already.
I know.
I kind of knew that because I would have it too. So, we took the structures, the site issues off the map as requested. And John, I think all your other comments had to do with whether it could be approved. Oh, there was one other issue, whether the T, ends the T, whether we wanted those to be an easement rather than a dedication so that in the event the road was continued in the future, you wouldn't have to undedicate pieces of the T on the ends. And when the road was continued. So, that's for the board to decide, we'll do it any way you want, and the easier the better for everybody, I think. If I've missed something you wanted to talk about, John, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but that's about it for us. If anybody else has any questions or concerns, we'll be happy to answer them.
Just follow up on that. BRW, our highway superintendent, went down and looked. His email read, "Good afternoon. My only concern was to make sure the road is not directly across from the house on the other side. So headlights not be shining directly into their windows. Other than that, all is good." I'm pretty sure Tom expresses concern to the representing lawyer of Diane last year. Let me know if anything else is needed. Sign Bruce BRW. And from Manly's Fire Department, Chief of Fire Jansen Caskells. Kevin, sorry if I mispronounced the name. "Good day in reviewing the included PDF, the location of proposed road and size of the turnaround are acceptable with the Manly's Fire Department. Please feel free to use this email as written approval." So, enjoy the beautiful weather. Stay inside. So, took care of the road issues. Our ECC Environmental Conservation Commission reviewed the application and they had a no comment on it. Going through the checklist that you had with you, John. The EAF mapper and so on, was that updated or that?
Yes, she did update it. It's, it's up to you guys now to decide if there were, these represent significant environmental impacts of this action.
Okay, but that updated EAF that they sent, we didn't see.
Correct. Well, I think it was resubmitted.
I cut, I cut. I know I sent it to John. I always usually copy you.
I don't remember getting that one.
Okay, I'll send it.
But it's okay.
He has it.
Okay. So, we're doing.
When you do the secret, I'll guide you through the issues.
Okay. That's what I was leading up to. Okay, we're good. All right. Anybody else have a comment, question? At this point.
Just one thing I noted, is I just saw this for the first time. There are two town road cross-sections, rural and residential. They're proposing the residential cross-section, which has kick-up curbs and storm sewers. Is that your intention here, that this town highway meet the residential standard as opposed to a more rural, open system?
It would be mine.
Yeah, mine too. I mean, the intent is to go to host on the lot, so.
And there may be future.
Could be future.
I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that this requires a storm sewer system then eventually in this type of road system. Opposed to open ditches where you can. I think most, all your residential subdivisions have that.
But when we get the engineering drawings, then we can look to see where the under drains are draining.
Yeah, I need to see the profile, the plans and the utilities that go with this. That's, this is just one piece of the road design right here.
Under an acre. Do we know that?
Yes, the, the actual disturbance to build the road will be under acre.
John, I saw you looking up. You probably have the same question I did with reference. What's the minimum lot size in farm?
District.
For farms, it's five. For residences, it's two.
I had a little, guys, um, that there seems to be a not a dispute, a difference in opinion between the Anadaga County billing or for taxation purposes, what they identified as, for the last three years, and your town map. And as I understand it, you guys control. So, at one point, when Mr. Phillips, is that right? Who, who sold this huge farm? I know somehow you're related to. Is that true? Oh, Smith. A Broad Brick subdivision was created in 1994. There was eight lots sold, and it was a town voted subdivision. We have the Broad Brick subdivision map. And so, it was our initial understanding when we began this two years ago, that this was residential, clearly on your town map. This is not residential. It is farm. So, at some point, and I don't want to make this an issue for this, we need to either tell the town of Anadaga, this is farm, not residential, and have it be taxed and appreciated in that way, or this town of Pompe has to deal and decide if that Broad Brick subdivision made it residential in some way, or whether there can be a subdivision of that nature on farm lots. But if I, they all have to be five acres. I'm not certain every one of those was. Maybe it was. Okay.
For my time.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah. So, just know that that's sort of a weird little thing that's out there. And I can give you maps and the Broad Brick subdivision map and any other information you might need. But Sally has been taxed on this as a residential, not farm for 30 years. Not that that's your problem. But just there's a discrepancy. That's a way to know.
For 30 years.
Okay. Jamie, did you have any?
I do not. Oh, was, do you know if this went to county?
It did.
We have not received.
I, I know. I got this week from by Porcello, he CC'd me on this map to the county. I don't know if the county's not in that or not.
I think it just. Approve, the GMO, he sent the GMO approval. That would have been Nikki, maybe not.
I think it was sent, but I think it missed the.
Oh, missed the. Oh, okay. Well, I don't think we can approve anyway. I think because we have some road.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I figured we'd open it. It would probably be continued. So, but other than that, we have enough. We can do the seeker and then sell it enough. So, okay. So, the board's good. The next step will be going through the seeker process, which is a series of 11 questions that, knowing the information that we've had access to and reviewed. Series 11 questions, and the answers are one of two choices. The first one being a no or a small impact may occur. The other option is a moderate to large impact may occur. So, we go through, read the questions. If there's any discussion or if John has any further information for us on each one, there'll be discussion and then we'll decide which answer best suits it. So, number one, will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use planning or zoning regulations? Discussion, I feel no.
No.
No. First one is no. Number two, will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity in use of the land? Again, large, large acreages. There is some housing in and around there. I think it falls within the bounds there.
Small impact.
Yeah. So, number two, no or small impact. Number three, will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, based on what we've been given, I feel it'd be a no or a small impact. Number four, will a proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
Right.
For engineer, there aren't any, so that would be a no answer. Number five, will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? Based on location and presented use, I say no or small impact.
Agreed.
Six, will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Again, I say no or small impact. Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? I'd say no. Or will a proposed action impact existing public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Anything on that?
This is in an archaeologically sensitive area. You're just talking basically about a subdivision. I think this will come into play more when look at the building permits to make go with the development of these lots. Separate action, where you're disturbing soil. There will be some small soil disturbance with the your road construction. So, typically what's done is that determination is solicited from Chipo to say that there's no impact. I would suggest that that be a condition of any approval. We might consider is that there be a sign up from Chipo. So, having said all that, it would be my opinion that the potential impact would be minimal and it will be reviewed by Chipo before any projects could be undertaken.
Any further questions on that?
So, is it a no or small?
Potential small, but it can, it would be mitigated.
No or small impact.
Agreed.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Again, looking at subdivision, I say no or small impact.
Again, this would be more relating to the land disturbance that would occur in a future. If it ever occurred.
Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Again, we're kind of the same thing, just based on subdivision, no or small impact, but it's done with the actual building or whatever.
Oh, construction will obviously have erosion control associated with it.
And number 11, will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
Agreed.
Based on those 11 answers, I make a motion for negative declaration on the Hootnik subdivision.
On second.
Second by John Shaheen. And if further discussion, hearing none, motion is out to approve negative deck. Well, then, favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is out to approve negative deck. Well, in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Can we make that motion?
Pardon me?
Make the motion. And the second was?
John.
Thank you.
Okay. I make a motion to open the public hearing on the Hootnik subdivision. Your second? Dan's second and all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. If there's anybody here or online that has a question or comment, name, identify yourself and.
I'm Eric Schreides. I'm on Water Vale, which I think is what we're discussing. And it's just a couple of questions. I'm hearing you talk about environmental impact, water. Obviously, we have concerns. I know that there were some developments in the past in the area that there were major concerns about water wells, all that kind of stuff. If you put a development in there, I obviously have a concern about that. It sounds like you've addressed those, or at least you, if what you're doing now is just the subdivision as opposed to the actual development and houses and stuff like that, and table that to later. Trying to understand this, and I have a concern about water. And obviously, there's a, there's a aquifer, there is a little stream that goes by. I know you're not supposed to get near streams. There is, I think, a forever wild. So there's a lot of issues that I was hoping to hear a little bit more about. That's what I.
What's in front of us right now is currently a subdivision. We've given ideas, we're trying to have conforming lots, and one of the outlines that we have within the town is that you need a certain number of road frontage feet. And to avoid using variances, which is basically bending the rules per se. The idea was to build this little road and it gives, it's a hammerhead for now, but it gives both of these parcels the required road frontage. We're just looking at what's been given to us right now. We can't be concerned with the what-ifs five years or tomorrow or whatever. If the larger lot was to be developed, everything would be right back here and we'd be going through the exact same process again. And there would be maps showing how it would be further subdivided.
So what you're saying is environmental impact, traffic, all this other stuff is is tabled until some this goes through and five years from now, a development is proposed or whatever, at that point, you'll reassess. In other words, you're not saying right now that you put 15 houses in there or whatever. You would again look at that.
Correct. Because right now, the way zoning is that possibly one house on each lot and theoretically, there's two lots, so maximum right now is two houses. If they wanted more on the larger lot, they have to come back through this whole process to get a subdivided again. And we'd be going through the exact same questions and what's going on. Yeah.
Nick Zepia, I live at 4257 Brickyard. So would the road that is being put in be, is that a variance in terms of the town laws right now? Or is that something that is permissible?
To build, the road would be built to town specs and after it is built, it is turned over to the town and they will assume yeah, rights, take care of it, et cetera. There's a lot of approval that has to go through for that road.
And is the proposed, where does the proposed road go to on the property in terms of it starts at Brickyard?
You can look right, yeah, over there. It's a short, all it is is what we call hammerhead.
So this is the five acre.
Right.
So you have to have two acres minimal for something. Right, for residential.
These are five acres. This is the five acre lots. Right now, they can put your houses on. Yep. If they decided to divide this lot to be anymore, the road would have to be extended.
You can, yeah, you can. Three houses.
And I would still, all the lots would still have the same size requirements. But we're not talking about that now.
Okay.
We live there.
Okay. If you can address the board.
My question is how would it affect the White Circle?
I'm sorry, in first place, okay. Okay, do you have any other questions?
Um, no, I was just, I just, when they were talking back and forth, I didn't understand the town laws in terms of putting new roads into property. And I thought, under my understanding, was that any property zoned agricultural, you had to get a variance to put a road in. It's not true.
Where was the other? And the purpose, the primary purpose of the road. Now he goes the road. Mittens.
All right, let's, let's. That's, no, it's okay, John.
Then so Jeff would be over here.
Ma'am. State your name and address.
I'm sorry, my name is Vera Serkancy. I live on Clearwater Circle.
Vera?
Yes. What do you have saying for me? A R, C is in Charles, C is in Zebra, Y is in Yankee, and Z is in Nancy, M is in Sam, K I. Okay. I knew that.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry, I live on Clearwater Circle and Sally Rootnich sent me a letter about this meeting. I was wondering how it would affect Clearwater Circle, or does it actually affect Clearwater Circle?
Gentlemen?
Could you guys?
Gentlemen, either, yeah, please, thank you. How it affects Clearwater Circle, this?
Well, the only thing is that the one lot that was on Clearwater is now expanded. This is Hootnik. Yes, yeah. I don't, I don't know that it affects it, except that it's bigger.
Okay, it's still two separate lots.
No, it's combined.
Off of Clearwater?
For Clearwater.
Sally, is this, is this all part of this lot one, this extension here?
It's really confusing, believe me, I've been working on this for so long. Waterfall's here. And then the stream goes here.
Yeah.
So everything on this side is on this side of the.
Yeah. But super question, is this part of this lot?
Yes, now we've erased this line. However, this is her lot, I'm Clearwater Circle. This is Sally's home.
Oh, right.
And the end of that is in the center of the stream. So she used to own these two lots separately. Now, so directly across the stream from where her house she owned that, it's all on the cliff there.
Right.
Now that piece has been added to this piece right here. So it's one, this is one five acre lot now. And this her home lot is separate. These are not combined anymore, or they never actually were. Some of these are, some of these are.
Where are you? Where are you?
Yeah.
I'm on a corner house, you're here?
I'm the first house on the corner.
Yeah, I don't think this is going to bother you because I think it's all over here.
It's all over on that side.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. It was nice to start to contact you.
Oh, she sent me a letter.
Veronica was running online. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, I'm Keisha Baranello. Let me spell again.
Oh, I've got it.
Hey guys, I'm a new potential buyer. So I just want to let you know, I'm putting a house there. I have an eight-year-old, just a farm school kid. I live in Colorado. I got an 11-year-old and a four-year-old girl. It's going to be a family house someday. Forever home for me in 14 years when my kids are grown up. And hopefully the best use of that must be farming. So that's kind of my plan.
That's not a subdivision.
No, I mean, it has the potential, like she said, but that's not the best use of that.
Can we bring it?
Oh, someplace, someplace advantageous for review and in the back if possible. Nice dreamy little windy road that goes back to some nice thing someday down the road.
Sounds nice.
Yeah. So it's the dream.
Any other questions? Um. Okay, recommendation from Jamie because we don't have the county comments.
Also, we're waiting on the road for the build information.
So we continue the hearing?
It is not necessary to continue it. You can close it. It's up to you. Or continue, whatever is your pleasure. Yeah, I mean, I.
I would be more inclined, I guess, to keep it open, but it's not a strong opinion.
You're strong. Well, if it were left open, then if anybody.
Somebody else.
They won't get offended by, oh, it's open and closed already, so.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing at our June. Next month's meeting, which is June third Monday, June 20th, 2022.
Second.
Carl seconds. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries to continue the public hearing of Hootnik subdivision at our next board meeting, June 20th.
Actually, we'll need for that meeting to approve it.
I'm trying to get them to be a couple of meetings.
They should be here. I have a quick question. So in the event the public hearing is, there's not a lot of adverse commentary. And the two remaining items that you don't have before you, the roadway plan and how they get my, want to find somebody to approve the disturbance of the road or.
Chipo said it.
We're here next week. Will the preliminary subdivision approval allow us to build the road? I mean, we have to build the road to get final subdivision approval, so.
How is the legal question?
I have no further planning board news. If you, Jamie or John have anything else for us tonight?
Do you want to talk about the temporary turnaround, get that off the discussion so they can present a plan that will be agreed with you guys? So the issue is when you have a typical town highway, sixty-foot right-of-way. If the road were never to be extended beyond this point, then you would probably include Hammerhead as part of the right-of-way. But if it were to ever be extended, you wouldn't need, that Hammerhead would disappear and the road would continue in. And you'd have these little wings on the road that you really don't need to be part of the right-of-way in the future. So typically, what you might do is reserve a sixty-foot right-of-way and then have the wings of the turnaround in the temporary easement. And it would remain in place for as long as the Hammerhead was there. And then when the road were extended, you wouldn't have to re-unsubdivide stuff to change the right-of-way. So that's two ways to go about doing that.
So if we go with a temporary version, then the assumption is that we should ask for a security that in the event we have to build a permanent one. And so there should, should there be a timeline? How long can it remain temporary?
It would be part of the highway agreement that you have for the rest of the road too.
Oh, would it be temporary? Would it be full buildout of the Hammerhead or a partial buildout of the Hammerhead?
No, we need a full buildout of the Hammerhead right now. So no class can turn around. It needs to meet all.
Well, sometimes we'll do where we just grapple it, you know, because it's just a.
But this, this is going to be permanently. Yeah, because it may, as I just heard, it may be for 14 or 15 years before anything may change. So yes.
And then if it's for 100 years, it's okay too.
Yes, exactly. That was my thinking, that we require it to be fully paved and full cost.
And that just gets them the option to proceed and then get rid of it without any problem with.
Right. So it's more just how you define the right-of-way now, not the construction, but just the legal.
The legalese.
Right. I totally agree with John on that, so.
You like the idea of a temporary easement?
Just for the two wings.
Yes, correct. And then you, how you describe it, right-of-way, the sixty feet wide to the Hammerhead.
Till such time, if ever, it's continued. If not, they remain there always.
Correct. Perpetuity.
Road continues, they disappear, we do the right-of-way.
Correct. So you'll be, you'll be preparing that. In your space time.
Okay.
Kevin's not here, so I guess that's, it's up to you.
Well, you're going to do a motion to continue?
I think we already did the motion. We did that. This is, we just want a motion to adjourn.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Okay. Any opposed? I thank you all for.